We're here this evening to receive public comments on the proposed Medex infectious waste incinerator facility located in the Airline Industrial Park in St. John and Baptist Parish, Section 36 Township 11 South, Range 6 East. The permit application was submitted April 30th, 1989. After extensive review, the standard permit was denied on May 5th, 1992. Medex filed a writ of mandamus on January 8th, 1992, and a supplemental petition for writ of mandamus and the application for additional injunction relief with the 19th Judicial District Court on May 15th, 1992. Judge Proten Louis Dougherty III ordered the department on September 14th, 1992 to conduct a hearing on the permit application within 30 days. The fact sheets which were provided at the desk as you entered will provide information on the sequence of events concerning the permitting process for this facility. The hearing officer will not be able to respond to questions or comments this evening. Following the public comment period, a responsiveness summary will be prepared addressing each verbal and written comment received tonight and during the comment period. The public comment period will end, as said before, 30 days from the date the public notice was issued, first working day after being October 26th. Each speaker, because of the number of speakers that we have this evening, will be allotted five minutes to present comments. If any speaker has additional comments after everyone has had an opportunity to speak, you will be invited back to complete your comments. Also, if you have any exhibits that you wish to present, you want them handed over to your table, please hand it to Mrs. Travis, who's the lady in the teal colored dress, and she will label the exhibits to go into the record. The first speaker in order tonight is Sonny Bowden, Reserve Louisiana.
I would like to speak to you on behalf of the younger generation of St. John and Baptist Parish, whom have watched over the years the air pollution all but destroy our parish. Our parish consists of chemical plants, oil refineries, and grain industry. Short and sweet, we have enough air pollution. Why add more? The children that are very young are breathing this air and are growing up with a burden on them already. Why add another health hazard? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden. Mr. Norman Bolion, B-O-L-I-O-N.
I'm from Garyville, a longtime resident, and the only time I've been absent from Garyville is a 20-year hitch in the military. And when I came back, I find that the town of Lyons has been totally absorbed by Maritza. And if you had another plan in, then eventually within five or 10 years, you could look at a main artery, not of Garyville, not of Gramercy anymore, or even Monerry. It could be all plants, and eventually it's all going to be bought up, or you're just going to pick up and move to La Plaize. Why can't you go pick on environmentalists and go out to Hammond somewhere? But yet you come out here on a reserve, next you'll move over to Garyville, and you could be in my backyard. I think the reason why you're not picking on environmentalists, because they have a lot more statistics, a lot more money, and a lot more time. So the less area of resistance, hey, let's go wipe out Reserve and Garyville, no big deal. And the thing is, is this plant's probably going to pick off anyway, because the people in the parish with the money, they want the parish. And this here, all we're doing is going through the motions. You're making it look good, but the plant will come eventually. If not this time, in a few years. And like right now, this hall should be packed a lot more than what it is, if not with the people, with families and friends, but they're too busy making a living. But one day, when they wake up and their children and grandchildren have birth defects and born all kinds of different ways, then we know what is normal, then they're going to wake up and say, you know, I should have gotten involved, but it's going to be too late. And I'm sure a lot of people running the plant are not going to live around here. And I'm sure some people say, what is this guy talking about? He sure is funny. Well, in five or 10 years, you laugh like you're laughing right now, and we'll see who's going to laugh. I'm not going to laugh. I'm just going to shake my head and say, shame, 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 real pitiful. But at least I know I said my piece and I tried to get involved.
The next speaker will be Rona Lewis, followed by Art Mars.
I'm with the St. John Citizens for Environmental Justice. Unfortunately, we have to be here tonight in this capacity to ask your department to protect our community where our parish council has fallen short many, many times. The people of this parish feel that we don't need this incinerator, we don't want it, and we urge y'all to please stick with your denial, and please protect us and our children, because as it is, the officials that we have now fall far short in that capacity. Also, I'd like to bring out the point in a newspaper article that brings out the point that a hazardous chemical accident is three times more likely to occur along a transportation route in St. John Parish than at a plant site. And because most of these residents live near a highway, a railroad, or the river, their chances of something like this happening with, let's say, chemical waste or medical waste with different types of things may be falling out of these trucks, children finding things on the road. That's another point I wanted to bring out that also is very, I'm very concerned about.
Art Mars, followed by Vance Robertson. Did I pronounce that correctly?
I don't have much to say, but I live where they have two incinerators operating right now, and I don't want to see a third one, because I had to end up with these two.
When you approach the microphone, speak into it. Do we have anybody from the local facility that can help us adjust that? Mr. Robertson, followed by Sharon Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. He got it now. The only thing I'd like to ask is how much industry, how much toxic waste, how much infectious waste has to be dumped in this one little parish before it's enough? These people from Florida, why can't they keep it in Florida? We've got a waste incinerator over in Dupont that's shipping in this stuff from Delaware and God knows where else. They're burning it here. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but they've been running on a temporary permit for 10 years because they can't comply to get a permanent permit. How do you keep running something that doesn't comply for 10 years? I don't understand that. I've been in industrial employment in petrochemical industry for 32 years. I've seen these plants come and go up and down this river. Most of them stay. I've seen and I've heard the promises that they promised. They paint a beautiful glowing picture, all of the thousands of jobs they're going to bring in, the thousands of dollars. They take the local politicians and the state level politicians, and they take them up the country, and they wind and dine them, and they fly to Hawaii and around, and when they get back, they've got a deal, and it filters all the way down to the local level. The thousands of jobs dwindled down to two or three or four or five or six, maybe if you're lucky, 20. Then none of them turn out to be what they're supposed to be. The smosaplastic deal will bring thousands of jobs. If you go to Baton Rouge and look at that plant, when you come out and check the people's status, where they live at, you'll find that there's very, very, very few of them come from East Baton Rouge Parish. And I could go on and on, but we don't need another medical incinerator in this parish. If Medex is out of Florida, they've got plenty, plenty of people that can help them burn it down there. I say keep it down there, and I implore on you not to give these people this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Ms. Ball, followed by Malcolm Pipes.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Ball, and I'm from the Tulane Environmental Law Clinic, and I'm representing the St. John Citizens for Environmental Justice. I'm not here to complain, because we're, I'm very pleased about the DEQ's May 5th decision to deny the Medex permit, and I'm here to urge the DEQ to hold on to that decision and to continue to deny the permit. I wanted to point out a few things that I'm sure you're aware of, but maybe the other, the audience isn't aware of. Under Louisiana law, as you know, the DEQ has a mandatory duty to deny the permit of any facility that would allow, that would make Louisiana exceed its total permitted capacity above 15 percent. You've made that determination. You've denied the permit. Anything else would be inconsistent with Louisiana law. In addition, as you're aware of, under Save Ourself, the 1984 Louisiana Supreme Court decision, the court decided that the DEQ is a public trustee, that it is the duty of the DEQ to conserve and protect the natural resources of the state of Louisiana, and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Louisiana. As you also know, there are several factors that go into that. First and foremost, we have to make sure that Medex has considered alternatives before you can give them a permit. Looking at Medex's permit application, it's very clear that they have not considered any alternatives, particularly with respect to the site. The application says that they chose reserve because it's close to their old facility, it's convenient for them, and it's going to, it's going to be economically feasible for them. That is not the kind of alternative that the statute called, that the case calls for. In addition, they haven't looked at other technological benefits. They need to do that before this permit can be granted. In addition, they haven't made any efforts to see that the benefits of this facility outweigh the environmental harms. Quite frankly, there's no way that they can show that anyone will benefit from this medical waste incinerator being in reserve other than Medex. Already, as you've heard, there are other facilities here. The people are already breathing medical waste. They don't need anymore. There's no way that they can show that anyone else will benefit. Finally, we ask that the DEQ look at the past history of Medex, the past history of violations of compliance orders, and eventually the shutdown because of the multitude of problems that the facility had. We'd like to thank you for allowing us to voice our opinions and urge you to please, please deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Mr. Malcolm Pipes, followed by Ross Johnston.
My name is Malcolm Pipes, and I'm a student attorney also for the Environmental Law Clinic at Tulane University, but I'm not here on behalf of Tulane University. I'm here representing the St. John Citizens for Environmental Justice and Louisiana Environmental Action Network. I'm going to talk about two broad areas tonight. One is the solid waste regulations and requirements to be put in the application, and some brief comments regarding the air pollution rates. Medex's application fails to meet the requirements of solid waste regulations. Statute requires that a map be included showing the service area. The only area that's shown on this map is the state of Louisiana, and the text in the application says that the primary area is going to be southern Louisiana. And we're talking about a facility with 96 ton per day capacity, and I don't think that the majority of the waste is going to be coming out of southern Louisiana. They state that the secondary areas will serve to meet the total capacity of the facility, and identify those secondary areas as the remainder of Louisiana and neighboring states to Mississippi and Texas in international waste. We feel that clearly the intent of Medex is to bring in barge traffic from overseas, from international holdings, as well as the rest of the country, and basically have garbage scows coming in that they can offload medical waste to burn at this facility, which is right off the Mississippi River. Their site plan also fails to adequately address storage. This has been a historical problem, as shown in the fact sheet that we got this evening, where they were, where they had a problem with storing without refrigeration. Their plan does identify cold storage, but allows for unrefrigerated storage on trailers for 72 hours. We're talking about storing organs, body parts, tissue samples, feces, expired blood, various body fluids, the entire range of material that would be in medical waste. They don't have any restrictions in their plan as far as ambient temperature that they'll be storing it. Talking about storing material on trailers for 72 hours with temperatures rising over to 120 degrees in summertime. There are a whole bunch of problems that could result, spontaneous combustion on the trailers, unforeseen chemical reactions, and definitely a buildup of methane gas from They also call for allowing seven days of total storage on these trucks, four days with the refrigeration turned on. So basically, you'd have three days without refrigeration, then they'd turn on the refrigeration units and keep the materials in storage for another four days. They also have plans to have a walk-in freezer with a three-ton capacity. There's nothing in as far as the maximum timeframe that they're planning on storing this material, nor is there any reason placed for why they have such a long-term storage facility considered. They also call for having 37-yard roll-off containers. They don't have any indication as whether or not there's refrigeration on these containers, how many they're going to be storing out on the parking lot. They do state that they're going to be sterilizing with skid-mounted sterilizers out on the parking lot area, but they don't indicate how they're going to be absolutely certain that they're going to have sufficient heat to kill all the bacteria and viruses. So you're going to end up with wastewater in the parking lot from the condensed steam. You're going to end up with contaminated soup in the parking lot made up of bacteria and viruses. The parking requirements themselves aren't discussed nearly accurately enough. We're talking about a 96-day ton capacity. We're talking about medical waste that's bulky. All the containers that are, that are packed are not going to be fully utilized. So you're going to end up with an awful lot of container space that is empty. There's no estimate on the number of trucks per day, no estimate on the number of roll-off containers they're going to have, and there's no turnaround time for those trucks and containers. All the containers are supposed to be disinfected, as well as the trucks. They need to indicate the estimated amount of traffic. There's no estimation of that, and there's also no estimate as the amount of tonnage that they'll be able to store in the event of a breakdown. There's no number of days capacity if the facility is totally down. They also fail to adequately discuss the breakdown procedures. The capacity stated to be 96 tons per day, yet they state in their application that if one incinerator goes down, they'll be able to meet the capacity by running the maximum throughput. There's nothing that indicates whether or not they're going to be able to maintain max throughput, as they put it, and also meet the requirements of the regulation of burning 1800 degrees Fahrenheit in the secondary chamber for two seconds. How is Medex going to be able to do this? They don't have any, any way in the application that they're going to be able to play catch-up and get rid of all this medical waste in the event of a breakdown. They also don't have a definitive preventative maintenance program. They need to show how they're planning on keeping this plant from being down. The bottom line on all this is that if you have a prolonged failure of one of both incinerators, you're going to end up with having to store literally hundreds of tons of hazardous infectious medical waste on the site, and that presents an unacceptable risk to the surrounding community. They also indicate that at least some radioactive and hazardous waste may come in. Their monitoring program is pretty much limited to a manifesting system. They need to do spot checks to ensure that their clients are not including authorized medical waste in the, in their output. They also state they've accepted a minimus amount of radioactive waste. In other words, there'll be a background reading, and that'll be sufficient to get in. They don't record this amount in any event, at 96 tons per day, any minimus amount of radioactive waste accumulated at extremely high rate. Secondly, the application fails to ensure that all the requirements of the air pollutant regulations for biomedical waste incinerators are met. There's nothing in that plan that indicates what they're going to be running the temperatures at. You have to have 1500 degrees Fahrenheit in the primary chamber and 1800 degrees Fahrenheit in the secondary chamber with a tension time of two seconds. In conclusion, this permit needs to be denied. Medex has had three years to clean it up, make sure that they've got all these problems identified, and they have failed to do so. They cannot handle double the throughput through the remaining incinerator or divert 48 tons per day if one incinerator goes down. I urge you to disapprove of this application. Thank you.
About two years ago, some of the citizens who live here informed me of the proposed incinerator and asked me to, to check input. And I did, and found that, that it, there was no need for another one in this area. We already have two. There was also an excess capacity for medical waste incinerators in this state, and the community generally was against it. And I believe that since we already have enough capacity for our needs in this state and the community is against this kind of a plant, then we should not do anything to force this plant on, on the people of the area. There should not be that kind of adversarial relationship. I found no groups of people, or even one single citizen, who's asked me to be for this plant. So for those reasons, I believe it's bad for the community to have it be here, and I've opposed it consistently.
I would ask you to try to limit your comments to five minutes with the promise on my part that I will make sure you get to come back to finish if you do go over five minutes.
All right. All I have is just one question. What partisans in this parish keeps inviting these people in? Somebody's inviting these people in. And as me being a voter and a taxpaying citizen, I would like to know what politicians or what councilmen keep inviting these people in or who are writing y'all to say they are welcome in this parish when the people say we don't want it? Could y'all possibly give me this answer? Which councilman, what politician keeps inviting these people in or writing y'all letters saying that we want them in here? Is, is there a possibility that y'all could give me this answer?
We, we're not prepared to respond to questions from the microphone tonight. This is, the purpose of this hearing is to, is to address technical comments and your comments on the permit application and the process.
Okay.
I think we, if you, I don't know if we'll have that information in DEQ, but if you, if you call the office, I'll give you a number. I'll be glad to talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
Jane Fontenot, followed by Murray Cleveland.
Mr. Patterson, speaking for a good portion of people here and a good portion of people at home who could not come. Quite frankly, sir, we do not want this garbage in our parish. We've got enough to live with. People need jobs, it's true, but this is hardly worth bringing in for a few jobs just above minimum wage. And like I said, we do not want this garbage in our parish.
Thank you, Mr. Fontenot.
I'm a citizen from a neighboring parish, Tangier Bahoa Parish. I have a family of five, and we're very concerned about our living conditions. We've lived with pollution on the Tangier Bahoa River for quite some time now. My concern is that I'm the, of the opinion that you need to dispose of your own waste in your own backyard, but to bring it in from outside some other place, I think that's the wrong thing to do. I also think that there are alternative technologies, some of them right here in our own backyard, already approved by the state, by the way. There are only two approved technologies. One is steam sterilization or auto-clavering, and the other is incineration. One in particular technology uses a steam sterilization process. There are no emissions to the ground or to the air. It does totally sterilize, and it does render the waste unrecognizable and harmless, and reduces the volume by 65 to 75 percent. There are other technologies like plasma paralysis, microwaving. I don't know if the individuals at Medex have looked at those, at those other technologies also and their impact upon the environment. I do know that if something has no emissions, you really can't have too many concerns about the impact it has on the environment. I would urge you not to allow waste brought in from outside this parish. I don't think the citizens could have any complaint about taking care of their own waste. Their concerns have to be for bringing it in from someplace else. So I urge you not to issue the permit, because there's too much that looks like the waste is coming in from outside this, this parish area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleveland. Nolan Jacob, followed by Robert E. Jordan.
I came out here mostly for a point of information. Being this concerns the reserve area, why, why couldn't this thing hit the ballot, say, in November, when a lot of people are going to be voting, and let's get rid of this thing once and for all?
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Mr. Robert E. Jordan. Ms. Sylvia P. Clayton. Followed by Lynn Taylor.
My name is Sylvia Clayton, and I would like for you all to be informed that I live in the Star Terrace area, which is already in the location of the other plant. My husband and I are both working. We have a nice, comfortable home. We're looking forward to retiring and enjoying our home, as well as our pool that's in our backyard. As it is right now, this past summer, we were not able to enjoy what we've paid for because of the odors that are coming from the previous, the plant that's now in existence. And I understand now you all want to put another one to the right of us and sandwich us in. I don't think it's fair. I need to, Florida needs to keep their waste, and you all need to put your plant somewhere else. Our black community has had enough.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Lynn Taylor, followed by Philip DeSherry.
Yes, my name is Lynn Taylor, and I represent Louisiana Citizen Action. We're part of a nationwide coalition of environmental and consumer groups, working in Louisiana to pass laws and organize citizens in order that we protect our air and water quality in the state. We oppose the proposal made by Medex to build another medical waste incinerator for a number of reasons. Medical waste burners emit even more toxic pollutants such as mercury, lead, and dioxin into the air than do garbage incinerators. Dioxins pose one of the greatest long-term Dioxins pose one of the greatest long-term threats to public health, and they are so toxic that safe levels of exposure cannot even be determined. Last year, Citizen Action worked nationwide on a federal bill that would estimate that would establish a moratorium on new medical waste incinerators. The legislation outlined the key to solving the medical waste problem by requiring waste production and the separation of infectious from non-infectious waste. More than eighty percent of the hospital waste is normal household garbage, food waste, paper, cans, and bottles. This could be separated from infectious waste disposed of through conventional methods. The legislation also called for strict air pollution regulations regardless of the size of the incinerator, and that bill will be introduced again in nineteen ninety-three. The DEQ's air regulations for medical waste incineration are weak at best, and recommendations by state environmental groups to strengthen these lacking air regulations were recently disregarded by the DEQ. Adding another medical waste incinerator, which would in effect triple the amount of medical waste burned in Louisiana, to be regulated by these inadequate laws could only prove to be a horrendous mistake. Louisiana currently has two medical waste incinerators that are permitted in it to burn thirty-seven million pounds of waste a year, which is more than enough to handle the state's yearly output. Reserve has a medical waste incinerator, BFI HMI, and it imports most of what it burns from out of state. Medex is a Miami-based company, and to address a question that a man had earlier, the reason that Medex is wanting to to build the incinerator in Louisiana is because in Florida, there is a moratorium on building new medical waste incinerators. Louisiana is a prime choice because of the lax laws that we already have. So we urge the DEQ to uphold its decision not to allow the Medex company to build its medical waste incinerator in reserve. And we would certainly hope that this would set the standard not to build unnecessary incinerators anywhere in Louisiana. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Philip DeSherry, followed by Alvin Villarette.
My name is Phil DeSherry. I'm a resident of Reserve, Louisiana. I live on Northwest Third A Street. It's in the near vicinity of the existing facility of Medex. Main reason I'm up here at this podium right now is because I checked off the little box that said I was against it. I didn't realize that, man, I had to get up here and make some comments. But I will say this, that on behalf of myself, I'm representing myself, my four children, my friends and neighbors who live on Northwest Third A Street, who feel the way that I do that justice needs to be served here. And in our eyes, justice is that each has been as has been mentioned earlier, that each state should deal with its own medical waste and its own, you know, we all want medical care. We all need to be treated by doctors, and so we're going to have medical waste, and it's something that we all have to deal with. We're not saying we need to take Louisiana's medical waste and send it to Florida or anywhere else. All we're asking for, and I just want to repeat the concerns of the ones who spoke before me, that justice would be served and that we would have to deal with our medical waste and every other state would have to deal with this with their own. I understand that is what the law says right now, and so we're just asking you to abide. Even though the laws may be lax, let's at least abide by the laws that we already have that say that we should not exceed the capacity that we have here in Louisiana. Thank you.
We don't need another medical waste incinerator here in St. John Parish. We have already have a one HMI/BFI medical waste incinerator. We are in the process of getting another medical waste plant, which is in recycling, and we don't need another medical waste facility. This facility will be burning over seventy million pounds of medical waste per year, which Louisiana doesn't generate that much. HMI/BFI is already bringing in seventy percent of the medical waste, has already brought in seventy percent of medical waste from out of Louisiana. We don't need any more medical waste facilities. I have been told by medical waste facilities that women do not belong in politics, do not belong in meetings, and that we belong in home. And also, I was told that my house could burn, and so could my car. And I don't feel I don't like being threatened, and all it does is make me stand on my hind horse and fight, so they're getting what they asked for.
I just spoke to a gentleman from this area who said that he wants the jobs.
The jobs, all right, but one of the things, I've spoke to quite a few people that has HMI and BFI that has jobs there. I know more people that has had jobs there and quit because they could not handle the thing of burning fetuses in the incinerator. They didn't like picking up body parts from off the floor and putting them into it. And this is we are talking Medex. The jobs will not pay that much. There won't be that many jobs to put a whole community into a hazardous waste dump. There's not enough jobs. There's not enough, I mean, we have enough. We don't need anymore. If they really want a job, I tell them how to get a job. All they got to do is become an environmentalist, and more plants will invite them to be hired and offer them a job faster than if they went out on the road looking for one. And I know because it's happened to me, to shut me up, they'd offer me jobs, they've offered to take me out to lunch, they've offered to burn down my car, my house, they've even offered to buy my house if I shut up. So if people want a job, tell them to get involved.
We'll be Roger Becknell. Thank you.
Members of the DEQ and Medex, I live in Reserve Annex myself, and I can look right near West Ten, looking at the sky, see the different colors of the sky and smell it, and it stinks. We don't need another incinerator that's going to be doing this kind of pollution. Also, I see we don't have too many councilmen around that's going to come and help us when we see them a lot before election. I would hope that you would not grant this permit. We lost Formosa, which would have produced seven to eight hundred jobs. How many jobs and what will St. John Parish benefit by having Medex in our parish? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roger Becknell, followed by Alfred L. Smith.
I don't have too much to say on this subject here. The only thing is, I don't think we need another medical waste or around here. I live in Reserve here on West Twenty Fourth Street, and I have two grain elevators and one oil plant. We have one medical waste plant there and taking care of our state, and I think that's clearly enough. And I'm against another one coming in here. I think our politicians ought to be taking care of what they are and doing. That's about all I have to say on this subject.
Thank you, Mr. Becknell. Alfred L. Smith. Joseph Accardo Jr., State Representative, St. John Parish.
Nearly two years ago, when this application was first filed with DEQ, I expressed my position to granting it. That was about at the same time that we were legislating, trying to pass laws which said that we would not allow importation of hazardous materials and hopefully medical waste when there was at least a hundred and fifteen percent of capacity here in this state. During the last couple of sessions of the legislature, I also opposed legislation which would have made it difficult for local governments to stop this kind of a facility. And again, when Secretary Midville was was confirmed as the new Secretary of DEQ, I expressed my opposition to this plant. The reasons being are that I believe that this kind of a waste facility should not come into a community when there is a substantial opposition to it. If I could find any significant groups of citizens who might want this kind of a facility in the middle of their community, then I'd say maybe there was some redeeming feature for allowing it to come here and for granting of this permit. But to the man and woman and child, the people of this community are against this facility. They see it as harmful to their quality of life. They see it as a danger to to the health of the of the families that live in this area, and I would implore DEQ to take that into consideration. We should not allow any company, any business, to come in and infringe upon the quality of life of the people of this community when when there is almost complete opposition to it. It would be different if we were trying to shut down an existing plant and depriving them of due process of law. But in this case, they want to come in and build a very huge facility which would handle medical waste from all over this country. If you look at their application, they admit they're going to take waste from other states. This company is a multinational company. It's out of Miami, Miami, Florida, but its parent company is an English company. It has waste facilities all over this world. It is not necessary that you grant this permit. You will not deprive them of any substantial revenue. Let them go somewhere else to do this. I also believe that when you look at the plan, you'll see that their application is defective. They talk about using the highest and best standards, but yet they say in their application they've not taken into account any kind of a natural catastrophe such as a hurricane or tornado. They've taken no special engineering precautions in building their plants. If the tornado or hurricane that recently came through this area had come through their plant, I can just predict it'd be trailer loads of waste spread all over the community and perhaps damage to the plant itself, spewing hazardous waste, medical waste all over the community. So I urge you to go back and have them take a look at the engineering standards for which they plan to build this plant. The other thing they said they're going to do is they're going to handle the twenty-five year rainfall in order to to make up for for the for the water that will fall on this plant and the overflow that might happen. I can just tell you that more than more than a few dozen times in my lifetime, there've been at least a ten-inch rainfall. They plan a ten-inch rainfall once in every twenty-five years. I'm going to ask you if you're going to grant them a permit, and I urge you not to, that you make them adhere to a more stringent engineering standard to handle water overflow and waste that will come from water. You should make this most difficult process that you can find to make sure that no matter what they say about the about the natural catastrophe that might happen or rainfall, that if in fact this plant is built, that it's going to be a very expensive one, and that it's going to be one that that will have no chance of injuring our people. I'm going to reurge to you that if you've not heard any local citizen here yet make a statement that they favor this plan, that ought to carry great weight, and I believe in in talking to Secretary Midville, it will carry great weight in whether or not you you grant this permit. Let the courts decide that you're wrong. Fight this issue. Fight Judge Daughtry's ruling all the way to the Supreme Court and maybe the Supreme Court of the United States. I think this is a local issue. It's an issue that people should should be able to control their communities, and if you grant this permit over their wishes, I think you will trample on this basic American right that we should be able to control our lives, should be able to control our communities, and protect ourselves from from this kind of a an intrusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Accardo. Leonard. I can't quite understand the name. Triplet, Leonard Triplet, followed by John Adams. Thank you.
My primary concern is I would like to know exactly what's emitted into the air when chemical waste burns, and will ask you to furnish the parish residents with the chemical formula so that we may be able to get a chemist to see what what's emitted combined with what's in the atmosphere already will yield. Secondly, we have all type of health hazards already, and we don't need any others coming from this type of facility. So I'm asking DEQ to turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Mr. John Adams, followed by Norman Englet, Jr.
My name is John Adams, and I represent the CHE, which is a group known as the Citizens for Health and Environment. I'm from Moss Point, Mississippi. And the reason I'm here this afternoon is because I'm very much concerned about what is happening here in this town that has already happened in our own town of Moss Point, Mississippi. We already have an incinerator. It's been operating some eight years without the proper equipment to monitor or to control the toxins that are emitted from this incinerator. And I sympathize with these people here today because we have lived with this thing for eight years, burning only municipal waste. And now we are faced with a problem of this of a company that wants to bring in medical waste. And we find that in our studies, we have went all over the country, we have consulted with many people, we have even consulted with a scientist in New York, and we find that these incinerators emit very toxic chemicals into the air. They emit mercury into the water, pollute the fishing, and we have found out that we do not want an incinerator in Moss Point. We already have it. We are now working through various organizations and various ways to try to get rid of it. Today, we have a lawsuit which involves the Mississippi ACLU, that's a civil liberties group. We have a lawsuit with the city of Moss Point against the city of Pascagoula who owns the incinerator. And we also have a lawsuit by a group of doctors who believe and know that an incinerator will pollute and be a hazard to the health of the people of our communities. We have over ten thousand petitions, signatories on petitions against this incinerator, and we are working. We have forty organizations that's against it. I'm here today to ask you, gentlemen, to seriously consider the penalty that these people will pay if you bring this incinerator into their community. And also, I ask that you look into the facts of it, and you'll find out that an incinerator is a hazardous thing to the community and to the people's health. Thank you.
I oppose it because what they do during the daytime and what they do at night is two totally different things. During the daytime, they have a real clean act, but when the sun goes down is when they do the majority of their burning, and that's when you see what comes out of their stacks. And that's basically it because they're not truthful, and they're not really, they're not a, say, how would you say it? You can't trust them because the minute you turn your back, they're breaking the law. They bypass filters, and this is all going on at nighttime when they think everybody's sleeping. That's all I got to say. I I got tapes of them. Yeah, I tape them almost every night. Yeah, and yeah, you know, that's the proof. You just can't trust them. And as far as the jobs that they cost, that they create, I think it pays like six dollars per hour, so it's really not worth it.
Following Mr. Mr. Englet, Mary Kay Coco Labi.
Name is Norman Englet. I'm a resident of Reserve. Appreciate DEQ giving us this opportunity to speak our opinion on the pending permit. When the previous permit hearing for HMI to increase their capacity was held, the citizens' group for Reserve pleaded with y'all to get tough, deny the permit for HMI. Well, y'all turned around and y'all granted HMI permit to increase their capacity. Y'all allowed them to make their expansions. Then y'all finally found some backbone, and y'all denied Medex a permit. But for some reason, it seems as though a higher authority has now overturned that and given y'all a second chance of denial. I hope DEQ has the backbone to deny this permit. I hope DEQ has the backbone to deny this permit again. I think what the citizens of this community need to do is voice their opinion at the ballot box. I see very few politicians here representing us. Last hearing we had, we had no local politicians. Evidently, once they get elected, they have their own agenda. As it stands right now in the Reserve area, we have numerous hazardous waste facilities. Marathon Petroleum has permits to discharge toxic waste into the air, land, and water. DuPont has a massive waste facility which handles waste from all of their locations here in Reserve. We have medics had an operation which is right now trying to get a larger one. We have HMI operating. As it stands right now, Louisiana is past capacity. I'm opposed to medics getting a permit to operate in Reserve, St. John Parish, and the state of Louisiana. Secondly, in the Reserve area, it's quite unique. As it stands right now, you know, we look for the well-being of our children. We have five school systems in Reserve. We have people from the tri-parish area who send their children here to school. We have a public school system, two Catholic schools, independent systems. We have a Reserve Christian School and a Riverside Academy with a large majority of children coming here from the tri-parish area. Also found some other data which I thought was pretty interesting, and it's about medics' permit application. Solid waste permit application specifies that a service area for a proposed facility, the service area defines the geographic locations from which a solid waste can be received. I would like to describe the service areas presented in the various locations throughout the permit application submitted by medics. The proposed incinerator would serve the healthcare and hospital industry primarily throughout the state of Louisiana. As it stands right now, the existing HMI facility is importing a lot of their waste, so evidently they can't find enough waste in Louisiana to meet their capacity as it stands now. Medics would have to go out of state to get their waste to destroy. The primary service area for medics, as stated in the permit, is from the parishes in southern Louisiana. The key is the secondary market. The primary market is already saturated. The secondary market would include waste generated from the remainder of the parishes in Louisiana, which doesn't exist, and from neighboring states such as Texas, Mississippi, and other medics' plants, which is worldwide, in case in the event of a mechanical failure or maintenance shutdown, and international garbage created aboard cruise ships or flights from overseas. The primary service area for the international garbage will include airports and seaports in the southern Louisiana area, and as we all are well aware of, and we brag about that the port of South Louisiana is the largest port facility in the United States. So we would get a majority of international garbage. So what real service area will the waste come from for this facility? Will it be Louisiana? I think not. The United States? Probably. Foreign countries? Likely. And the world. How is DEQ going to determine the service area, which is one of y'all's control points? Whose waste is DEQ willing to accept? Is DEQ, right now, DEQ is understaffed and underfunded, and that's due to our local politicians and our politicians in the state. Are you willing to take waste into Louisiana from other states, DEQ? And from other nations? Can you really oversee such an operation? Since medics have such a hard time defining their desired service area in the permit application, the permit should be denied on the basis of inconsistent service area, and also for the well-being of this community, which already has shared the burden of numerous waste facilities. So again, uh, I'm asking DEQ to, uh, stand up, deny this permit, and let's push it as far as we can to run them out of the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engle. Mary Kay Coco, I think I was being given a pronunciation lesson a minute ago. Labi, thank you. Following Ms. Labi, Mona Jacob.
I'm one of those citizens that checked the block without realizing I'd have to get up here and speak, but I am a parishioner and I'm a mother, and the idea of toxic waste in our water and air, coming from international waters or other states, is horrific. I think that the accidents on all the three transportation avenues we have, water, tank, the railroads, the trucks, the highways, and the amount of accidents and cleanup that they couldn't possibly take care of is making me very frightened. I am one of the ones that are pleading with you, begging you not to let medics come into my parish, my state, not even the United States, we had away with this, but definitely not in our parish. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Labi. I would, I would point out that just because you, you check a block does not force you to come forward. We encourage you to, to take part in what we, what we refer to as our public participation process, but if for some reason you feel that you do not want to come forward, just find some way to signal me and I will, I will move on. Ms. Jacob, followed by John Philwok.
Hi, I'm Mona Jacob from Reserve, Louisiana. I am the co-chairperson of St. John's Citizens for Environmental Justice. Our family, uh, has been here for over 250 years in the St. John Parish, one of the first original settlers. The doctors have told me and my son, to me, to move my son out of St. John the Baptist Parish because of his asthma. Like most of the people here, we all feel like we need a home, and this was our home. We are selling our house and all we have is five years left to pay on it. Uh, the HMI incinerator, the BFI HMI, we had protested and took years for us to get them to install a scrubber, which we finally did get, but, um, DEQ didn't tell the group that we have about its decision, and we would like for them to tell us the group here, um, when y'all make a decision. In 1990, DEQ failed to notify us after the BFI HMI hearing that was, the decision hadn't been made. We request notice at this time, every one of us, of any new action or hearing or decision of this permit, and which goes, that goes for the air permit too, especially because DEQ has already granted a 10-year permit to the burnout of state waste. We strongly urge DEQ to abstain its denial to this permit. One of the things I would like to bring, there is a, uh, half decent crowd here tonight, but what you don't see is these over 500 signatures that we collected that says these people don't want any more incinerators. They're tired of it. We're tired of being the medical waste capital of the world. I, a lot of other people have not been, wouldn't come to the meeting tonight or speak out because of things that happened to me. For example, I was told by a medical waste, uh, gentleman up in rank that if, I wouldn't be quiet because women do not belong in meetings, that my car and my house could burn. We don't need this kind of shit here. Excuse that. Uh, a lot of people will not come to the meetings, they're afraid of the medical waste facilities. People who were in, uh, the same building ha- with HMI has moved out of the buildings because of things happening to their property, the, uh, pollutions and everything else going there. Medics, if you go look over there, they closed down. Y'all have put, um, with their compliance laws, if you call the medical, the environmental agency out of Florida, we called them to ask them for a copy of their compliance history. They told us if we want the history, to bring a truck because that's how bad it is. We need y'all to deny it. Stand behind y'all's decision. Y'all made the laws for us up in Baton Rouge for us in 86, whatever y'all made the law. We need y'all to stand behind it because the same way if we go 55 miles an hour in a 30-mile zone, we get penalized. There should be no difference for these companies.
I'm against the medics' facility because I think, um, we have enough ha- waste, not just hazardous waste in this area, but the pollution that industry puts out in this area is bad enough, we don't need anymore.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for holding this public meeting this evening, and to the public for showing up. My name is John Philwok, and I live on Northwest 19th Street. This is the location of the BFI HMI waste incinerator. I live approximately a half a mile from this plant. Some of the stories I'm going to tell you may curl your toes. I've lived there for 14 years. The wife and I do not have air conditioning. By choice, we live with ceiling fans and window fans. Some nights, it's very hard to sleep because of the smell and the smoke that comes from the north winds into our home. I go by this plant every day to work. I work at Marathon Oil, and we use 19th Street as our in-and-out to our home. Some of the things I've seen are trucks are being washed out in the parking lot with the water just going into the parking lot into the ditches. Nighttime, this seems to be their favorite time to burn. Thick, black, gray, white smoke will pour, just pour out of this units. As some of the people have said, they did put on a scrubber unit, but the scrubber unit is not used at all the times. They will use their main burner. One night, we came back from New Orleans, I'd say 11 or 12 o'clock at night, and we saw a very thick, black cloud over La Plaz. As we drove down Airline Highway, the cloud got smaller, smaller, and smaller, and as we turned onto Northwest 19th Street, that cloud ended up over at BFI. We stopped and told them, "Sir, your, you know, your, your smoke is too much. It's, it's all the way into La Plaz." The man told the wife and I that that was fog. I do not appreciate my intelligence to be questioned like that. We tried to speak to the man again about it, and he told us to get off the property. Since I've seen this incinerator since day one, I'm not happy. I don't see any standards. I don't see anyone monitoring this place. The ditches are dark and murky, filled with water. At times, there's a six-to-eight-foot flame on both stacks, and I know that's not right. So I'm asking you, since I do live a half a mile from this incinerator and other residents have commented about the smell and the smoke and the ashes that fall on your car and your home, to please do not approve this permit. We have enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philwok. J.M. Ford, followed by Art Dumas. Mr. Ford representing Citizens for a Healthy Environment.
Good evening. I'm John Ford from Pascagoula, Mississippi. I am also a member and representative of the Jackson County branch of Citizens for a Healthy Environment. The purpose of my being here tonight is just to give you some of the information that we have uncovered as a result of our being involved in a medical waste incinerator issue for a past year or so in the Pascagoula-Moss Point region of Mississippi. Essentially, medical waste is comprised of roughly 80% plastics. That usually is a shock that plastics are the major constituent. This is emesis basins, old potties, water jugs, plastic, uh, wrappings, that material was, uh, kept in, uh, surgical instruments and so forth like that. The plastics are predominantly polyvinyl chloride, but they are also specialty plastics insofar as they have three mu- heavy metals as the major constituents. They use chromium, cadmium, and lead in these particular plastics. The chromium and the lead for coloration and for toughness, and the cadmium for strength to be able to withstand the higher temperatures of autoclaving. These plastic, these materials as a plastic are essentially inert and harmless to the human. However, when they are incinerated, the basic metals are freed, and they are resolved in either of two ways. Either they go out the stack or they go in the ash. Either way, they present a tremendous danger to the human body. Another one of the thing, another constituent of medical waste is mercury, that there is probably in the order of between 10 and 35% more mercury in medical waste than there is in standard municipal solid waste. The presence of mercury is from a number of sources. Principally, it is from various medications and/or, uh, testing materials, but also getting to be less and less, but also as a response, uh, result of thermometers and so forth like that. As the changeover is being made to electronic temperature measuring equipment, that segment of mercury is decreasing, but mercury is still being used as far as for biological and laboratory testing still continues. The mercury itself has a very low boiling point. In fact, it vaporizes at a temperature and stays as a vapor at a temperature that will not condense in any of the known air pollution equipment that is used to date. It enters the atmosphere as a vapor. Recent studies have shown that three tenths of one gram of mercury, when it is methylated, that is, it is converted into another form through natural biological processes in warm, humid waters, which is what we have here, slightly acidic. Three tenths of one gram of mercury will pollute a 25-acre lake to the degree that the fish in that lake are toxic to humans. Now, the reason I'm stressing that so much is that in our local community, Pascagoula-Moss Point, Mississippi, we have a municipal waste incinerator that has burned very little medical waste to date. It was tested for mercury emissions only one time, and it was only on one of two burners, and that incinerator was emitting 12.99 grams of mercury every hour. You can think of possibly one, this is a little 75-ton per hour incinerator, the one unit that was tested. For what is being proposed here, I will let y'all draw your own conclusions on. Another one of the toxic elements that is a discharge of toxic components is, as we referred to earlier, is the dioxins and the furants. One of the arguments you will hear quite often is, "Oh, but they're destroyed in the combustion process." Correct, but what they're not telling you also is the recent studies coming out of Ger- out of Germany show that yes, the dioxins that enter the incinerator are destroyed. However, new compounds are formed on the tail end, principally an electrostatic precipitator. I regret that I did not bring a bibliography of materials for us, but if any of y'all would care to write for bibliography of the sources to find this material so that you may present it to the DEQ or use it in future public hearings, if you would please write "The Jackson County Citizens for a Healthy Environment, 1703 Ingalls Avenue, I-N-G-A-L-L-S, Pascagoula, Mississippi, 39567. We will provide what we can to you free of charge." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Next speaker is Mr. Art Dumas. I'm going to do a housekeeping announcement. I'm going to do a housekeeping announcement first, if you don't mind, Mr. Dumas. Ms. Jacob has asked that we make sure that you know that there's jambalaya available outside as far, and also soft drinks, and for the people arriving late, they may not be aware that it is available, that is outside. We're going to take a short break after Mr. Dumas and allow us all to get up and stretch and take care of our own housekeeping. Mr. Dumas, please proceed.
Gentlemen, my name is Art Dumas. I'm the executive director of Jackson County Citizens for a Healthy Environment over in Pascagoula-Moss Point area of Mississippi. I believe this is about what it's all about right here. If anybody disagrees with that, I, I'd like for them to stand up and, and really say that you disagree. What about our kids? Me? Mine are grown, but I got grandchildren. You've got, you've got children, you've got children, grandchildren. That's what it's all about. What Mr. Ford, one thing that Mr. Ford didn't mention to you, the fallout range on that stuff coming out of that stack is the same as acid rain. Acid range, acid rain has got a, what, 250-mile fallout ring? So what you put out here, we're going to get over there. If that thing over there goes through, you're going to get over here. So, hey, we don't need it, you don't need it. You've got, you, like us, you've got enough stacks emitting pollutants in the air. We've got enough stacks emitting pollutants in, in the air. You combine these, and, and, gentlemen, DEQ, I wish to congratulate you because you did have the guts to stand up where our DEQ did not. They bowed down to, to the people. So thank you for standing up for the people. Mr. Ford, it's not something, thing that has not been mentioned, I have not heard mentioned, is, what's its added stack, medical waste, whatever you want to call it, going to do to your local property value? I'll assure you, it is not going to help the local income at, at all. It's all going to go out of state. The food chain, this stuff's going to go in the ground. It, it's, and it's going to come up in, in the vegetation that you eat, in the fish that you eat, in the meat that you, that you raise, the chickens, the cows, pigs that, that you raise. So, hey, you're not, you're not safe from it. I was just made aware a few minutes ago that some of this stuff is now coming in by ships. What if they drop this, what if a barge sinks out there? How many intakes between here and the mouth of Mississippi are in public water supplies? I done a little research here a while back on this medical waste, the profitability of it. 32-gallon container is what, is roughly what most of your doctor's offices has. Now, I'm not talking about hospitals, I'm talking strictly doctor's offices right now. A 32-gallon container, the average pickup is 22 pounds. The average charge is $40, container. Now, if you really want to do some quick thinking real quick, you'll see that comes out somewhere between 38 and $4,000 a ton. So there is money in medical waste, and it's going to be, take money to fight them. And please, people, do not give up. We have on our side, in addition to the, to the Civil Liberties Unit, Union, we've got our Attorney General, and if need be, beg your Attorney General to, to get in bed with him. He is filing suit on, on behalf of City of Moss Point. We've got the Sierra Club Legal Defense Fund. Whatever you can, whoever you can get to come on board to help you, get them and praise them, and thank God that you've got the help. Don't give up. We've been fighting them down there for 10 and 1/2, 11 months, very actively now, and we've probably got another year or so still fighting them. Hopefully, by that time, the politicians that were in bed with them will be out of office and things go smoother. I, I hope you all have the same luck getting your politicians out. Thank you.
I'm, I would like to say that I'm very, I'm undecided about whether we, I'm against it or for the, whatever, the company, but I would like to say that we do need jobs in Louisiana, but we do need to also be concerned about our health.
I'm from the Lafayette area, but this facility concerns me too, and I'd like to speak to some aspects of their permit. The solid waste permit application for the Medex incinerator contains Figure 8, which is entitled Federal Map, excuse me, Federal Flood Map, and the map indicates that the proposed site is located in Flood Zone B. A note in the legend of the map indicates that the Flood Zone B area is protected from the 100-year flood by levee, dock, or other structure subject to failure or overtopping during larger floods. On page 1-2, the same information is contained in Section I, Period A, Period 3. However, on page 2-15, Section CI, Medex states that the site is in an area of minimum or no flooding. This is about radioactive waste, on which I have a question on their permit also. On page 2-31 of the Medex Solid Waste Permit Application, it is stated that Medex will not accept radioactive waste. The radioactive section then goes on to describe the process of accepting or rejecting generators' waste on the basis of a determined radioactivity level above a de, a de minimis background. Medex also describes an employee and customer education procedure that instructs employees and customers that no radioactive waste will be accepted. This procedure is presented in Exhibit 27 of the permit application. If Medex does not accept radioactive waste, what is radioactive waste classified as that falls within the de minimis background level? Who establishes the de minimis background levels? And why are these levels not listed in the employee and customer education procedures of Exhibit 27? Does the Nuclear Division of DEQ regulate the levels of radioactivity that Medex does accept? The DEQ Solid Waste Division and the Nuclear Division should both review this section of the permit application and determine exactly what radioactive waste Medex does and does not accept. Their levels of radioactivity should be presented in detail in this permit application. I'd like to address the need. Medex states on page 1-13 of the Solid Waste Permit Application that presently there are not adequate infectious waste processing plants within the state of Louisiana. The proposed processing incinerator will provide some capacity for the state. According to DEQ, this statement is absolutely not true. DEQ denied the Medex permit application for this site because the requested capacity would result in the state permitted capacity exceeding its medical waste generating capacity by more than 15%. DEQ should not have, should not have accepted the Medex permit application as complete with such a statement in the permit application. Now, the thing I'd like to address is, um, the sterilizer. In the portion of the Medex Solid Waste Permit Application dealing with medical waste storage times and conditions, the following item appears. Waste in 37-yard roll-off containers that could exceed the three-day timeframe for storage will be sterilizing using skid-mounted sterilizers. See Section 12 of Exhibit 20 for the sterilizing slash operating procedures. Section 12 of Exhibit 20 contains a procedure for operation of a steam sterilization system for the treatment of biohazardous waste. This is the only two places in the application where a steam sterilizer unit is mentioned. Is Medex requesting a solid waste permit for a steam sterilizer unit to treat medical waste? It was not mentioned in the description of the process and the facility operational plan. It was only mentioned when storage time was discussed. The steam sterilizer was not included in the application for the air permit. It appears that Medex is trying to include steam sterilization in their air and solid waste permits without providing the appropriate documentation. Thus, the solid waste application is incomplete concerning the steam sterilizer unit, and the air permit application is completely lacking. The Solid Waste Division should deny the permit based on incompleteness, and the Air Quality Division should be notified that the air emission application is lacking concerning the steam sterilizer. One more item. The Louisiana Solid Waste Regulation states facilities which dispose of putrescible solid waste shall not be located within 10,000 feet of a public-use airport runway by turb, by, used by turbojet aircraft, or 5,000 feet from any public-use airport runway used only by piston-type aircraft. According to Medex, the proposed facility is located 5,500 feet from the St. John the Baptist Parish Airport runway. Those are Pages 2-23 and 3-3 of the Solid Waste Permit Application. However, according to Figure 7, it appears that portions of the incineration facility are less than 5,000 feet from the parish airport. This would cause the proposed facility to be in violation of the solid waste regulation. In the permit application, a letter was included from the St. John the Baptist Parish President and the Technical Advisor of the Airport Advisory Committee. The letter indicated that the St. John the Baptist Parish Airport was designed to handle single- and twin-engine propeller-driven aircraft, but can also handle single- and twin-engine turbojet aircraft. The solid waste regulations require a 10,000-foot zone around turbojet runways. Utilizing the measurements provided by Medex, the proposed facility is in violation of the solid waste regulation. Medex states on page 2-23 of the Solid, Solid Waste Permit Application that the facility will not handle or dispose of putrescible solid waste outside. Thus, there will be no birds attracted to the site resulting in a hazard, excuse me, hazard to the turbojets. The fact that the waste is not disposed of outside does not eliminate compliance with the regulation. The possibility exists that a large portion of the 700 tons per week waste stream to be processed by Medex could be putrescible waste. According to the permit application, Page 1-13 and Exhibit 25, Medex intends to process Type 3 waste. This waste consists of garbage consisting of animal and vegetable waste from restaurants, cafeterias, hotels, hospitals, and markets. Medex also plans to process international garbage consisting of fruits, vegetables, and meats from cruise ships and overseas flights. Thus, the fact that Medex will be processing putrescible waste at a facility located too close to an airport should be reason enough to deny the solid waste permit application. Thank you. And I want these attachments entered into the record.
Could you please present them to Mrs. Travels, please?
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Ms. Ramona Stevens, representing Louisiana Environmental Action Network, followed by Mr. David A. Tucker.
Tom, I'd like to hear from Medex first before we go any further in this hearing. Normally, every hearing I've gone to, we've heard from the applicant first, and then we come back and we make our statements. I would like to come back after Medex has spoken.
Following Mr. Tucker, Ms. Teresa Robert, representing Save Ourselves Incorporated.
Yes, I worked for Medex. I've been working for Medex for just about four years, close to it. I've never had no kind of problems with my health, anything like that. As you can see, I look pretty healthy, you know? And as far as I look at it, is, everybody is talking about like environmental control, environmental this, environmental that. One day, everybody, and I'm not just speaking for Medex, I'm speaking for, like, the people that work for Marathon, people that work for all these other refineries, chemical plants, plastic plants, whatever they got. You're pushing your own people out of jobs. One day, the overseas are going to have more jobs than we're going to have. We're going to have clean air, we're going to have clean water, but we ain't going to have no jobs. We're all going to starve to death. You're going to send your kids to school, to go to school to another state because they ain't going to have a job in their own state. And that's the way I feel about the whole deal.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Ms. Teresa Robert, followed by Susan K. Snow. Ms. Robert.
My, my name is Teresa Robert, and I'm a housewife and a mother of three children. I'm a member of an organization called Save Ourselves Incorporated, which was established in Ascension Parish almost 13 years ago. As you know, SOS was responsible for the landmark decision, SOS et al. versus the Environmental Control Commission. The DEQ, as well as other environmental, as other governmental agencies, including the Attorney General's Office, have used and continue to use this Louisiana Supreme Court ruling. This decision mandated that the first and foremost responsibility of our environmental agency is to protect the health, the welfare, and the environment of Louisiana citizens. It further mandated that DEQ must consider alternative sites, technologies, and a cost-benefit analysis on all permits, which certainly should include and take into consideration whether or not there is a need for this facility. We know that it is unconstitutional to refuse out-of-state waste, and DEQ knows better than anyone else that you cannot control the importation of this waste. The state of Louisiana has been the dumping ground of the nation for decades. We have in the past and continue to lead the nation in air emissions, water discharges, and hazardous waste. Are we now trying to lead the nation in medical waste incinerator capacity? We, as citizens of Louisiana, already bear more than our burden for the whole rest of the nation in toxic releases. Most major hospitals throughout Louisiana have their own incinerators. It is my understanding that Louisiana is already meeting our needs and properly disposing of our medical waste. I would like to go on record opposing this Medex incinerator proposal. I would like to encourage DEQ to deny this permit and to protect the health and welfare of the citizens of St. John the Baptist and the citizens of the state of Louisiana. Thank you.
I was very concerned about this facility. This facility will be taking in 15% more garbage than what the state needs. It'll be importing garbage, it'll be taking international garbage, not only garbage, but medical waste that will be burned. And right now, I'm very concerned about the environmental state of Louisiana. We don't need to be an international dump or incinerator. We have a lot more going for us than just disposing of other people's garbage and waste.
Susan Snow, followed by Ms. Mary Ann Nicholson.
Thank you, Tom and Bill. Bunny Snow, Susan K. Snow, what's your, what's your pleasure? Medex of Florida is here because the Florida Legislature has forced, has passed a moratorium on biomedical waste incinerators due to the high levels of mercury in the Florida Everglades. According to the Florida Health Department, at 1.5 parts per million of mercury, fish should not be eaten at all. Yet, it's my understanding from the Morning Advocate that DEQ has found from 1.0 to 4.04 parts per million of mercury in the Washtata River 100 miles from the Arkansas line. Is that downwind from PPG Industries? Or where's it coming from? That we don't know, but the mercury is in the fish. I think the people of Louisiana need something a little bit better than facilities that are being banned in Florida and are coming here because of perhaps regulations that are lax since the medical community overrode them last year or two years ago. Medex has applied for a solid waste permit to construct two new incinerators. Medex intends to burn 100 tons of waste each day or 700 tons per week. Medex estimates that the incinerators will be in operation 330 days each year. In one year, the incinerators will burn 31,680 tons of waste. As the waste is burned and the incinerator substances are emitted from the incinerator stacks into the air, the substances consist of particulate matter, 8.8 tons per year, hydrogen chloride, which produces acid deposition, 31.6 tons per year, sulfur dioxide, 44.4 tons per year, which also produces acid deposition, nitrous, nitrogen oxide, 129.6 tons per year, another form of acid rain. heavy metals, 12.2 tons per year. This is a total of 281.8 tons per year of substances given off into the air from incinerators when they are operating properly. That doesn't include downtime, that doesn't include puffs when they're operating properly. When you compare air emissions of 281.8 tons per year to the waste being burned, 31,680 tons per year, or 0.9% of the waste loaded into the incinerator is coming out of the stack, almost 1% of what is going into the incinerator is being emitted into the air. The 12.2 tons per year of heavy metals emitted into the air consists of arsenic, beryllium, cadmium, nickel, hexaval- hexaval- hexavalium, chromium, lead, mercury, and hydrogen fluoride. The citizens of Reserve and the citizens of Louisiana do not deserve 12 tons of toxic heavy metals being emitted into the air every year during the time the two incinerators would be in operation. According to the permit application, the operational life of this facility is 20 years. That means 244 tons of toxic heavy metals could be emitted into the air over the life of the facility. According to the permit application, the heavy metals will be emitted as particulate matter. Where will the 244 tons of heavy metals-laden particulate matter settle? If the wind comes from the southeast, it'll land on the Echappélye Basin and the fish in the food chain and over Lafayette. If it goes from the southwest, it'll hit New Orleans and it'll hit Mississippi. It lands on the land, in the soil, in our water bodies, in our seafood, on our skin, in our lungs. In fact, there have been studies done that show that dioxin can be absorbed into the skin of young infant rats and of elderly rats. The concern is if it goes into the skin of the infant and elderly rats, it could possibly go into the skin of infant children and elderly adults. Dioxin, according to Chemical and Engineering News, which came from the EPA studies, reduces our children's ability to understand. It causes atrophy that is wasting away of various organs in the body, including the liver, kidney, and testes, gentlemen. It causes suppression of the immune system like AIDS, severe birth defects. A super fun site in Texas that was contaminated with dioxin, four- and five-year-olds were found with dioxin in their bodies. The boys were born with...the four- and five-year-old boys had birth canals. Is this what Medex is going to do to our children? The four- and five-year-old girls had pubic hair and large breasts. Now, this is just from dioxin. We haven't talked about the other health problems from the heavy metals. The fact that all children in America, regardless of whether they eat lead-laden paint or live downwind from an incinerator, reduce their intelligence from more than 10 or 15 points just from the lead in their bodies. It doesn't talk about the heavy metals of mercury, for example, that accumulate in fish, that eating just a small portion of that fish per year can cross the placenta and go to the unborn fetus, creating cavities in the brain of a developing fetus. Here, we're supporting a right to life. Maybe we ought to go further and support the right to life without severe birth defects from mercury, or lower intelligence from lead, or cancer from chromium, or all the other health problems that come about from these heavy metals and dioxins. According...
I would ask me...
Okay, just a few more moments. What will be the long-term impact of additional...of the addition to our environment of two tons of mercury, more than five tons of lead, seven tons of arsenic, and 18 tons of chromium? Will it contaminate our vegetable gardens, our seafood, our animals, our people? The people of Reserve and the South Louisiana receive toxic metals while Medex receives the gold. Please, say no to Medex and their two incinerators. Thank you.
Ms. Dana, I'm for it. Definitely, I'm for it. I got involved, I got close to the company in the sense that I was curious, and I went over there and found out that they have a very safety precision, you know, to take care of this medical waste. And the fact is that I'm a worker, you know? We need jobs over here. And before we can just jump on conclusions and get scared about, you know, because it's a medical waste, we have to find out, you know? And I went over there and I see a very clean environmental and a very high-tech, you know, process that they're using. You know, they out-of-clay, I asked what this out-of-clay means, and they actually sterilize the waste before they dump it into the, you know, the dumpster place. And since the mill is paranoid here, you know? We need jobs, and this is one of the best companies, best equipment for that particular job, you know? So I'm for it, definitely. You know, I'm just surprised that a lot of people, most, you know, housewives, you know, they just don't know exactly the techniques or, you know? And they don't have no conscience, actually, for the needs of jobs in these areas, you know? Period.
Ms. Mary Ann Nicholson, followed by Carol A. Thibodeau.
Hello. I represent Star Terrace. That's a subdivision, all black. It's about two, three, four blocks from Medex, the place that exists now. Each time I leave my home and make it to the airline highway, I pass on the street with Medex. And they always have trucks parked in the middle of the street. I've spoke to people about this before, but the trucks are still there. Sometimes both sides are blocked. I had a car once that was hit twice, which was parked on the side of the street by drunks. The same thing could happen with Medex. And then what would we do? I would appreciate it if they don't expand. I don't like the job that they're doing now. I don't think they should block our highways because of the dangers that are there. I'm sure you know of them. So I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholson. Ms. Carol A. Thibodeau, followed by Kim Chasson.
Oh, sorry. My name is Carol A. Thibodeau. I'm from Lafayette, Louisiana. I'm a speech-language pathologist. I'm a private practitioner there, and I have concerns about this permit. I'd like to read something into the record. Can...is this... Want me to face this way? Is that what... In the back of the phone? Okay. Got it? Okay. Medex is requesting a permit for an incinerator which will burn 100 tons of waste per day. The cover page of the permit application states that Medex Incorporated is applying for a permit for a solid waste incinerator to process infectious waste. Throughout the permit application is the phrase, "The Proposed Solid Waste Incinerator." The waste stream to be burned in the Medex incinerator are described in various locations in the permit application. On page 13 and Exhibit 25, the waste streams are described as follows. Type O: trash, paper, cardboard, wood boxes, and combustible floor sweepings from commercial and industrial activities. Type 1: rubbish, paper, cardboard, wood scrap, foliage, and combustible floor sweepings from domestic, commercial, and industrial activities. Type 2: refuge consisting of rubbish and garbage. Type 3: garbage consisting of animal and vegetable waste from restaurants, cafeterias, hotels, hospitals, and markets. Type 4: human and animal remains from hospitals, laboratories, and animal pounds. On page 2 through 4, the waste stream included international garbage created aboard cruise ships and flights from overseas. Page 2 through 28 describes the waste streams as infectious waste, sharps, pathological waste, and international garbage from airports and seaports from states located along the Gulf of Mexico. In section number 2, Medex provides a list of the types of customers they service. These include health-related customers, international airlines, shippers, and USDA, pharmaceutical manufacturers, confidential documents from banks, research professionals, government agencies, manufacturers, credit corporations, and businesses, dead animals from the general public, veterinarians and animal shelters, and sophisticated narcotics from law enforcement agencies. The proposed Medex facility is not just a medical waste incinerator, but a garbage incinerator that will burn more than 30,000 tons of garbage each year. If Medex intends to burn garbage in addition to medical waste, then the public notice of this hearing should have included the words "garbage incinerator." Medex's public notice of intent, as well as information provided to various state and federal agencies, only mentioned the medical waste portion of the waste stream. The permit application should be denied based on improper characterization of the type of incineration or garbage incinerator is being described as a medical waste incinerator. And I have attachments that I'd like to put into the record. Go ahead.
Ms. Thibodeau, thank you. Kim Chasson, followed by Harold Green.
How you doing? My name is Kim Chasson from La Plaize. I'm an ex-employee for Medex. I got caught, I was loading up a trailer for them already, and I got in the hospital with a calactulums. Until today, they never paid my medical bill, till today. And that's three years ago. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chasson. Harold Green. Charles Kraft. After Ms. Evans, Junius Henry. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Catherine Evans, La Plaize, Louisiana, one of the members of the St. John Citizens for Environmental Justice. On February 6, 1989, Dorothy L. Corazon of the law firm of Morgan, Lewis, and Bacias submitted on behalf of Medex a request to the Louisiana Resource Recovery and Development Authority. We call that LRRDA. This letter was for conformance with the statewide plan on Medex's behalf. The letter stated that Medex planned to construct an infectious waste incinerator which would be used to render infectious waste from hospitals and other medical facilities harmless. The letter to LRRDA was provided as Exhibit 15 in the solid waste permit application. On April 25, 1990, Butch Stegall, acting administrator of LRRDA, issued a letter to Mrs. Corazon concerning the Medex incinerator. The letter is attached as Exhibit 15A in the permit application and states that the Medex facility does not conflict with any plans or proposed facilities of LRRDA and that LRRDA has no objections to the proposal. This LRRDA letter is invalid. The waste streams submitted by Medex to LRRDA were limited to infectious waste from hospitals and other medical facilities. The solid waste permit application lists the following types of waste to be processed in the incinerator. And Ms. Thibodeau just noted those: infectious waste, sharps, pathological waste, antineoplastic agents, international garbage, type O waste, type 1 waste, type 2 waste, type 3 waste, type 4 waste. The waste stream submitted by Medex to LRRDA was incomplete. This incomplete information was used as a basis of an invalid LRRDA letter. Thus, the solid waste permit application is incomplete because it does not contain a valid LRRDA letter. The application for a solid waste permit should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Junius Henry. Following Ms. Desatelle, William J. Alma.
Hello, my name is Victoria Desatelle. I'm a nurse and a mother of three children. I live in Jefferson Parish, which, as you know, like the people from Lafayette and all the other surrounding areas. I'm concerned, too, about what happens in our environment. Everybody's jumping on their councilmen and politicians about, "Don't let this pass," and "You're not doing this good, you're not doing this right." Y'all elected them. One thing I have to say to the councilmembers, I heard so many fallacies here tonight about medical waste, it's unbelievable. Why wouldn't it stress that a community that it's not just this big company coming in and taking over our small town? Yes, it's national, and it is worldwide, and how do you think they got to be that way from being good, from being really good? No one made comments when y'all were speaking, so I'd like it and appreciate it very much if you keep your comments to yourself. Medical waste can be rendered harmless by autoclaving and incineration, it is proven. They have extremely stringent, not lax, laws that are set by the EPA. You can't just come in and do what you want in a community in any state. So, I mean, if you don't have enough faith in your representatives, they're not the only people who are policing this board. It's a lot of different other services also. And where do you think your medical waste is going right now? It's going to Florida. Florida with all these strict rules. So if they were so sloppy in not handling this stuff right, how's Florida accepting it? Now, is it fair to send it to Florida? Let's talk about hazards there. You're taking a trailer load of hazardous waste and shipping it how many hundreds of miles? What if there's an accident? What if...then the whole place will be contaminated? If you keep it local and burn it local, it reduces a risk of contamination from transporting it from place to place. You voted your representatives in, and all you could do is trust that they'll make the right decision for you. They've viewed Medex's projects before. Just because you have accepted trash into your community before is not fair to accept a good company who's coming in, is going to not put all these pollutants in the air. It's been proven, your councilmen have saw it, they showed the filtration system and everything. You're talking as citizens, as community members, and you're right as a community, as a member of this community in this wonderful state of Louisiana. What about the right to enterprise? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. William J. Alma, followed by Stephanie J. Helford.
I'm not going to stoop to your level, so I'm just going to... I'm not gonna stoop to your level, so I'm just gonna go on with what I was gonna say.
I would remind you all that this is a matter of public record, and everything that is, everything that's heard over the microphone is into the official record of the Department of Environmental Quality. I would remind you that the purpose of this hearing is to accept comments concerning the proposed, the proposed permit, and you are, you are officially addressing the public record. I would remind you of that.
I'm glad to be here, although I know I'm amongst a large group of angry people. I do, I'm a sales representative for Medex. My name is William J. Arm. I live in the Lafayette Parish. I have been a sales representative for Medex for over three and a half years. I'm very distraught. I wasn't gonna say anything, I just wanted to sit back and listen to what everybody had to say, but I can't believe how misinformed you people really are. I, I work with a lot of the, we do a lot of business here with the medical community. We do Our Lady of the Lake, Our Lady of Lords, Elmwood, St. Charles General. We handle your medical waste here. And a lot of this information that's coming out about incineration is not, does not have to do with our techni, our technology. You wanna start helping the air, you wanna start doing this, you need to shut down the smaller units here, in the smaller hospitals that are putting out those pollutants, not ours. And I hear a lot of frustration coming out of Pascagoula, Mississippi, coming, that's great, but that, this is not Pascagoula, Mississippi. This, this right here is Reserve. And I like to hear, and I know you're angry, I know you guys have been under a lot of stress as far as the past, I know you guys have been dumped on a lot, but we, I don't appreciate the frustration that you're venting out on us. And are there certain people like Ms. Jacobs that wanna say that she's heard, you know, she's been accused by medical waste representatives? I'd like her to state that it has not had, it has not been Medex representatives. We have not done anything to you people. We have sat back and waited and waited. I know I've been waiting for this incinerator for a long time, and it's not gonna harm anybody. And as far, I know, I know there's people that don't believe it, but you don't know what medical waste is. I mean, that's the whole thing. If you knew what it was, and as far as you're talking about, we're considering ourselves as a solid waste transporter or a solid waste incinerating, we don't care about solid waste to burn it. It wouldn't be cost-effective for us. All we're doing is exactly, we're just saying that once garbage is commingled with infectious waste in the hospitals, if it's not segregated properly, it has to be considered infectious waste, and that's what we're taking in. Now, I know I'm not gonna change anybody's opinion, and I do hope I have a safe walk back to my car. But, excuse me? But, you know, I'm not, I'm just speaking out, you know, I'm a small minority, which I've been for a while, but, you know, please look at our side, at our angles. We're not out to hurt the environment at all, and our facility is a damn good one. And we have a state-of-the-art facility, and I wish that you guys would take the time, instead of hearing people read everything that they don't know about, they could even spell the words that they're saying, to listen to our side and to our technology, and then you make a sound decision based on knowing everything and not just one side of the story that they're gonna promote. These are the same people that are gonna promote, "Don't drink Pepsi anymore because you're gonna get cancer and everybody's gonna die." So I don't mean to get off on that, but these people, you just like them, you just, please just argue about something that you know about. Thank you.
Our fish is so polluted, I cannot eat it. I can't eat the fish from this area. And we have to start fighting. We have to do something. Our food isn't edible. We don't have any pecans this year either, you know? We can't live if we don't try to put a hope to the over-polluting of our environment.
I came here to register my opposition to the granting of this permit. I'm a resident of Louisiana by choice, I'm not a native. I'd like to commend the DEQ on their decision so far in this, and I'd like to encourage the department not to change their stand on this. I'm not anti-waste management. I believe waste has to be taken care of because there is so much of it, but I believe that in the DEQ denying this permit, it'll serve as a symbol to the medical industry and other excessive waste-producing industries, that it's time that waste be reduced and not just taken care of and cleaned up and burnt. I'd also like to ask about parliamentary procedure here. I noticed that you allowed the, I guess, primary representative from Medex to be placed last, and I don't know how fair that is, this is my first public hearing like this, but I, I just don't understand how that's allowed. I don't know if it's a courtesy or, because they're the least represented here, I'm not sure, but...
It was a request on the part of the speaker.
Okay.
As, as was one other. We have two people now have been asked to be moved to last.
I don't know how you're gonna do two people last, but that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Mr. Johnson, it asked to be, it asked to be placed last, and now three, three other speakers have, have come forward. Mr. Johnson.
I'll go now. This is fine. First of all, one reason why I asked to go last is that Medex has, for three years, been putting forth an application and a presentation, and we've given several, we've been at several public hearings, and we've given a, an open public hearing one time back in August of 1990, where we invited people to come and hear what we had to say about this incinerator and how it was gonna work. And at that particular public hearing that we gave, we brought our engineers that described the entire process. At this hearing, I wanted to hear what other people had to say before I went, just to see if there's something new that hasn't been addressed in our permit application. And I fully intend on submitting comments from Medex to address all the comments that were developed here, and I'll submit those to DEQ. A couple of points, though, that are, I feel grossly out of proportion at this, that have been brought up today, are, first of all, one, that we're a Florida corporation and that we're only here because there's a moratorium in Florida. The truth is, is that Medex purchased a corporation in reserve that's across the street from the facility where we're intending on building this new facility. And as soon as we purchased that back in 1988, we began working on upgrading and building an upgraded facility in the same location. That was well before, 1988 was well before Florida ever began to consider a moratorium. At this point in time, Florida has instituted a moratorium. However, it has granted Medex two additional construction permits to build a new facility in Miami that's now in progress. Those permits were given, again, in a situation where we had an older plant and we were building an upgraded facility. Florida does have very progressive laws in medical waste management, and they deemed that our permit application was, was fine, and they're looking forward to having state-of-the-art technology in the state of Florida. The other thing I've noticed that I wanna comment on that has been grossly brought out of proportion is the definition of international garbage. International garbage is defined by United States Department of Agriculture. And what it is, is fruits, vegetables, and meats from overseas that are discarded during flights or cruises from overseas locations. And what that means is that while a plane or while a ship may come from an overseas location to a port in Louisiana, the onboard fruits and vegetables that are eaten by ship hands that are discarded as galley waste need to be taken care of as an infectious waste. They need to be incinerated. And this amounts to the garbage that's developed by the crew in transit from the, from the port overseas. It does not mean a shipload of medical waste coming from overseas. International garbage is a minuscule amount of garbage that will be incinerated by our facility, and it, it offers a service so that USDA can ensure that no pathogens from overseas are mistakenly brought to Louisiana, thereby infecting the citrus or other crops in the state of Louisiana. That's all the comments I have. And as I said before, we'll probably, we'll be submitting additional comments to DEQ once this is over. Thank you.
Louisiana Environmental Action Network is against this incinerator. Louisiana already has two commercial medical waste incinerators. We don't need a third one to burn out, out-of-state waste.
I'd just like to tell you that I've listened to both sides of the story, and I know I probably don't know all about it, like one of the people said, but I would just like to tell you that in your decision, I would like you to really consider our future, because after everybody's gone with the next generation, and we, we'll be the people that have to take over and do whatever you do. And I'd just like to say that, and thank you.
And I'm sure you'll do a very good job representing us, too. Could we have your name again? I'm not so sure that he came over the tape. Jamie Smith. Thank you very much. Could you state your name into the microphone, please?
My name is Amber Lewis. My name is Amber Lewis, and I'm 13 years old, and I'm an eighth grader also. I go to Riverside. And I live on West 19th Street, right down the street from HBI BFI Incinerator. And right here it says, "Medex is not a good, is not a very good neighbor," as this letter shows, "but we already have a bad incinerator that's a neighbor of mine, and we don't need another one in our town." This letter states, "We now, we are now long past being concerned, we are being poisoned. Each night my lungs burn as though they are on fire. I am in total agony. I also don't sleep because my nervous system is irritated. I feel like a trapped wounded animal in a cage, only the cage is my own home. Having two poison factories side by side belching toxic, foul-smelling, vile air to the community is uncivilized and inhumane. Yet nobody will do anything except try to justify these monsters to us." Smoke was pouring out of the Medex facility. It was like driving in downtown Los Angeles. The air was murky and foul-smelling. At present, as present, it was environmentally unsafe, and we continue to be these casualties. And right here, I have a list of complaints. Medex smoking especially early in the morning and on weekends. Incinerator smoking very bad for part, for part, for past 30 minutes. And another complaint, smoke from stack. They sound just like our complaints as, as our neighbors of BFI's incinerator. Why, I repeat, why? Has our local council brought more on, more on us?